Good morning and welcome to the Hawaii State Senate Committee on Commerce and Consumer Protection. It is Friday, March twenty first, two thousand and twenty five, nine thirty A M in conference room two two nine at the Hawaii State Capitol. Uh, we're here for um, a hearing on nominees to various boards and commissions. Uh, this meeting is being streamed live on YouTube and in the unlikely event that we experience technical difficulties, we will try to reconvene uh before the end of this uh normally ninety minute time slot at eleven A M. It's our customary practice in this committee to observe a two-minute testimony time limit. We have received all of the written testimony and reviewed all of it, including the resumes and questionnaires that were provided to the nominees, uh all of which submitted responses. So thank you to everyone who has volunteered to step forward and participate. Um, I'll be going through a list of testifiers. If you're on Zoom, please stand by. Our operator Gia will keep your video disabled and your audio muted until this is your turn and then they'll queue you up. Once I see you come off of mute, I'll say good morning and then you can proceed with your testimony. Okay, first member is uh first uh nominee is David Padilla, Governor's Message five fifteen for consideration and confirmation to the State Boxing Commission of Hawaii. Uh, first up, we have the uh D C C A in support.
Morning Chair James, Executive Officer of Boxing Commission, standing on written testimony in support.
Thank you for standing on your testimony and support. Uh, we also have uh written testimony in support from Jan Combs and from Susan Manuma, who said the nominee was irritatingly fair. Do we have the nominee online?
He is online chair.
Uh, good morning. If you'd like to make a statement to the committee, please uh go ahead.
Good morning, committee. Um, I just thank you for your time and I, you know, I'll just keep it short and I just can't wait to um wait to serve, you know, I'm I'm totally looking forward to it.
Thank you very much. Uh, that's all the, oh, we also have uh late uh testimony I missed in support from Bob Ostovich. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, any questions? Okay, we'll move on to the next nominee. Thank you very much, Mister uh Padilla. The next one is G M, Governor's Message five thirty four. Stephen Pine for consideration to the Board of Dentistry term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty eight. Uh, Department of Health in support. Okay, Board of Dentistry in support. Thank you very much. Patrick Donnelly in support online.
Not available on Zoom chair.
Thank you. Uh, late testimony from Aloha Care in support. We also have uh Department of Health, Hawaii Dental Association in support. And and Vizda in support, Kawai Oral Health Coalition. Uh, that's all the testimony we've received. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, do we have uh the nominee? Okay, thank you. Uh, members, any questions for the Board of Dentistry? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you very much. Next nominee is uh Governor's Message five thirty five to the Board of Acupuncture. Deborah McMenamy. Hopefully I got that right. Board of Acupuncture in support. Thank you very much. Doctor Joni Kroll in support. Doctor Jane Sutsuyama in support. Martha Rebela in support. Michael McMenamy in support. Wailo in support, Cherry Mizumoto in support, Callie Thomas in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, I believe we have the nominee. Good morning.
Good morning.
Would you like to make a statement?
Um, just that I've I've served on the board for six years now and am eager to uh continue with that, continue with the work that we do there, and I appreciate your support.
Thank you very much, members. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to our next nominee. Governor's Message five sixty one Tiffany Lin Hummel to the Hawaii Board of Veterinary Medicine, term to expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty eight. Uh, Hawaii Board of Veterinary Medicine in support. Thank you very much. That's all the registered testimony we have. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, do we have the nominee? Okay, we'll move on. Uh, Governor's Message five sixty two, Nathan Eveslin for consideration to the Cable Advisory Committee, term to expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty eight. Uh, D C C A in support.
Yes, hi. Good morning Chair Randy Leon with the Cable Television Division, standing on support of um the panelists. Advisory Committee.
Thank you very much. Sean Taketa McLaughlin in support. Legor Gaines in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, I believe we have the nominee online. Mr. Eveslin?
Hi.
Hi, uh, please go ahead and make a statement. Good morning.
Yeah, I'm honored to be um nominated for this board position and excited to take part in the Cable Advisory Committee.
Uh, thank you very much, members. Any questions? No, uh, thank you very much for making yourself available. We'll move on to the next nominee. Governor's Message five sixty three, Gabriel Asay to the Hawaii Board of Veterinary Medicine for a term to expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty eight. Board of Veterinary Medicine in support. Thank you very much. That's all the testimony we've received on this nominee. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, do we have the nominee? Okay, moving on, Governor's Message five sixty five. John Takitani for consideration to the Board of Professional Engineers, Architects, Surveyors, and Landscape Architects for a term to expire on June thirty, two thousand and twenty eight. Uh, D C C A in support. Thank you. We have Mahipono in support. And Royce Fukuroku of C P B in support. Is there anyone else who'd like to testify on this nomination? Okay, do we have the nominee? Okay, thank you. Moving on, uh, G M six eighteen, John Arbels for consideration to the State Board of Public Accountancy, term to expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty eight. Uh, first up, D C C A in support. Thank you very much. Lawrence Sugawa in support, Noy Kalipi in support. Shanti Fujimoto in support. Catherine Madden in support. Andrew Correa in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this nomination? Do we have Mr. Arbels?
He is online chair.
Okay. He he is online?
Yes, he is online.
Mr. Arbels? Okay, well, Mr. Arbels, if you're online and uh it's taking you a second to come on, just pop on when you're ready. We'll move on, but uh we'd like to hear you, hear from you if uh you are available. Uh, members, any questions on the nominee for the D C C A? If not, we'll move on. Uh, G M six five six, Tony Lau for consideration to the Board of Professional Engineers, Architects, Surveyors, and Landscape Architects for a term to expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty nine. Uh, D C C A. Okay, thank you. We have uh the American Society of Civil Engineers Hawaii Section in support. Y K E in support. Jeffrey Kalani, Ron Iwomoto from Iwomoto Engineering Consultants in support. Glenn Miyasato in support, Tim Goshi in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Members, any questions for the D C C A? Do we have the nominee? Yes, please. Good morning.
Morning Chair, my name is Tony Lau. Uh, thank you for your consideration of my reappointment.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Uh, good morning Chair, uh, members of the committee. Uh, my name is Tony Lau. Um, thank you for your consideration of my reappointment to the board and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Uh, members, questions? No, okay, we'll move on. Uh, G M five six fifty seven for consideration to the Board of Dentistry, Joyce Shimabuku for a term to expire on June thirty, two thousand and twenty nine. Uh, Board of Dentistry in support. Okay, we also have Joyce Yamada in support, Neil Furuya in support, and Heather Boland in support. Uh, do we have the nominee? Okay, members, any questions for the D C C A? Okay, if not, we'll move forward. Uh, G M six fifty eight. Brooke Foreman for consideration to the Board of Acupuncture, term to expire on June thirty, two thousand and twenty nine. Board of Acupuncture. Okay, thank you very much. That's all the submitted testimony we have. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, do we have Ms. Foreman? Nope. Okay, we'll move on. Uh, G M six fifty nine, David Kamakia the third to the Board of Electricians and Plumbers for a term to expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty nine. Uh, Board of Electricians and Plumbers in support. Thank you very much. Uh, Shung Man Wong in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, Mister Kamakia, aloha.
Uh, appreciate the opportunity of um my reappointment to the board. Um, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Uh, thank you very much, members. Any questions for the nominee? Okay, Mister Kamakia, thank you for making yourself available. We'll move on.
Aloha.
Uh, Governor's Message six sixty eight, Alyssa Toyama for consideration to the Board of Professional Engineers, Architects, Surveyors, and Landscape Architects for a term to expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty nine. Uh, D C C A in support.
Morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, we do not have here as Director of D C C A, standing on our written testimony in support of this nomination.
Thank you very much. F A I Architects in support. Omizu Architecture in support and Don Hibbert in support. Uh, is there anyone else who would like to testify? Ms. Toyama?
Good morning.
Um, good morning Senator, good morning um members of the committee. I am Alyssa Toyama. Thank you for considering my appointment to the East La Board. Um, I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay, members, any questions? Okay, thank you for joining us today and for serving on the board. Okay, we'll move on to the next measure. Uh, Governor's Message six eighty three, Stephen Taketa to the Board of Psychology, term to expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty nine. Uh, D C C A in support.
Morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, we do not have here, uh, Director of D C C A, submit on our written testimony in support.
Thank you. Board of Psychology in support.
Morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, my name is Christopher Bennett, Executive Officer to the Board. I'm here to stand on the board's testimony, supporting the nomination.
Thank you very much. Mary Yi in sport. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, uh, we have Mister Taketa online. Good morning.
Good morning, uh, Chair, Keohu Kalole and committee members. I'm really extremely honored to be here.
Uh, would you like to make a statement about your nomination?
I'm just uh like to state that I'm extremely honored and I believe that I can competently and effectively serve uh the people of this state on this committee and I'm very grateful to have been nominated. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Members, any questions for the nominee? Okay, no questions. Thank you for making yourself available and for stepping forward to serve.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Governor's Message six eighty seven, Eileen Wada for consideration to the Hawaii Board of Veterinary Medicine, term to expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty seven. Uh, Hawaii Board of Veterinary Medicine in support. Thank you. Karen Kaya in sport.
Yeah. Stand on my written testimony. I stand on my written testimony. I also want to be able to find the person I strongly support finding nomination to the Board of Veterinary Medicine. I have been on the A O A.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Normally, if you stand on your testimony, it's just acknowledging that we've read your written remarks, but you want to say more, so please join us up here so that the microphones and the feed can can hear what you have to say.
Thank you Chair, thank you committee. Um, I have served with Eileen on the
You can um state your name again.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Karen Kaya. Sorry, this is the first time I have, I am providing an oral in-person testimony. Um, I strong, I am strongly in support of Eileen's uh consideration and confirmation to the Hawaii Board of Veterinary Medicine. I have served with Eileen on the Association of Apartment Owners on uh the top of the Tropic Gardens Board of Directors since March twenty twenty. Um, Eileen has been the president since March twenty twenty. Under Eileen's leadership, we have commenced a much-needed capital improvement project of Tropic Gardens and we have just completed uh one or four phases of the project. All uh, well, many owners and board members alike have confidence and trust in Eileen for her vast experience and knowledge as a real estate professional and as a long-term board member. Um, Eileen, this is the first time I've served on a board and I am, I am very fortunate to have had the opportunity to work with and learn from Eileen. Uh, I admire her for her ability to maintain objectivity, her professionalism, her diplomacy. Um, you you know, during the most contentious board discussions, um, Eileen has always considered the best interests of animals and their families at Tropic Gardens and I as a parent of uh three dogs over the past nine years, I have find comfort knowing someone of Eileen's credentials and character is a member of the Board of Veterinary Medicine. Thank you Chair and Committee.
Thank you very much. You did great. Uh, Democratic Party of Hawaii in sport. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, do we have Ms. Wada? Online? No. Okay, um, members, any questions for the testifier or the D C C A? D C C A, please. Oh, no. Okay, never mind. Uh, moving on, next, next uh nominee, Governor's Message seven oh four. Alan Shi to the Board of Pharmacy for a term to expire on June thirty, two thousand and twenty seven. Uh, D C C A in support.
Morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, we now the Director of D C C A, uh, submit on our written testimony in support of this nomination.
Thank you very much. Ronald Taniguchi in support. Dan King Sung in support and Nelson Nakko in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, uh, we have Mister Shi online. Good morning.
Morning, uh, I'm uh very excited to be able to um help uh work with the Board of Pharmacy. I've um actually spent quite a bit of time just talking to them about all kinds of various issues, so it's very uh exciting to be able to work with them more in person and to help um help serve the people of Hawaii.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, for making yourself available. Any questions for the nominee? Okay, thank you again. We'll move on to the next Governor's Message seven oh five. Andrew Fong uh for consideration to the Hawaii Medical Board, term to expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty seven. Hawaii Medical Board in support. Thank you for standing on your testimony. Kaiser Permanente in support.
Morning Chair, we're standing on our testimony in support.
Thank you very much. Uh, is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, do we have Mister Fong? Okay, any questions for Kaiser? No? Okay, fine, we'll move on. Uh, next nominee is Governor's Message seven oh six, Brian Chen for consideration to the Board of Speech Pathology and Audiology, term to expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty nine. Uh, Board of Speech Pathology and Audiology in support.
Morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Christopher Bennett, Executive Officer to the Board, here to stand on the board's testimony, supporting the nomination.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, Mister Chen. Not available? Okay, any questions for the board? No, all right, moving on. G M seven oh seven, James Place uh to the Hawaii Board of Chiropractic, term to expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty eight. Uh, Hawaii Board of Chiropractic in support. Thank you very much. Uh, Doctor Rachel Klein in support and Alice Ogawa in support, and I believe we have the nominee online. Good morning.
Morning. Can you hear me? Okay.
We can hear you now. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Jim Place. I'm a chiropractor. I currently serve on the Hawaii Board of Chiropractic as Chair. I'm asking to uh uh re-up for another term to continue the work that we've done. I originally uh was on the board in two thousand and eleven. Uh, so I'm very familiar with the how the board works. Also, I've been in the board of the Hawaii State Chiropractic Association and held every position with the exception of secretary. Um, also, I've been involved with Rotary on Maui as well as a a member of the Ethics Committee for Holly Makua, a long-term care facility on Maui. I appreciate your time today and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, members. Any questions for the nominee? Okay, Seungnam, thank you for joining us today and for continuing to serve. Uh, next up is Governor's Message seven oh eight. Jill Wakabayashi to the Board of Physical Therapy for a term to expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty nine. Board of Physical Therapy in support. Thank you very much. Gail Miao in support and Cheryl Kozuma in support. And I see we have Ms. Wakabayashi online. Good morning.
Good morning. Um, thank you for considering me to return to the board, which I had enjoyed my time in the previous terms that I served and look forward to doing it again. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. Uh, members, any questions? Okay, thank you for making yourself available and again for stepping forward to serve. Next, we have Governor's Message seven oh nine. Jun Ching for consideration to the Board of Psychology for a term to expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty nine. Board of Psychology in support.
Morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, I'm here to stand on the board's testimony, uh, supporting the nomination. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Raymond Fallen in support and Evelyn Yanagita in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Hey, do we have Ms. Ching?
Fortunately, she was unable to be here.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, any questions for the board? If not, we'll move forward. Governor's Message seven ten. Scott Collins for consideration to the Board of Private Detectives, Guards, and Guards for a term to expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty nine. Uh, Board of Private Detectives and Guards in support.
Good morning Chair, members of the committee, Justin Jones, Executive Officer for the Board of Private Detective Guards. Uh, we stand on our written testimony in support of Mr. Collins.
Thank you very much. We have Franklin Don Caro in support and Albert Dennis in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, Mister Collins.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Scott Collins. First, I want to thank you for the considering my reappointment. Think I have a lot to offer to the board based on my unit background. That's my way of trying to get back to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any questions? Vice Chair.
I'm kind of curious to um get your perspective, you know, from your prior experience in um police enforcement and in the prosecutor's office because in recent years, we've had many issues um that have arisen and I think from, you know, the safety and security of a lot of the security personnel. It's been a very challenging time. Do you see um the board playing a role in perhaps um you know, coming forward with um additional recommendations to assist um security companies in this arena?
At the present, I would think we have a capability, we don't have the staff, training, um monitor, qualify them. That that's a huge, I mean, the staff has the hands full just with the applications. We take on that endeavor based on the staffing right now as being possible.
Okay, why? I know that in, you know, in recent years, there have been a number of instances where we have had um security personnel that have either been injured or um deceased as a result of some of the kinds of experiences they have encountered, you know, in the work they do. So um hopefully, as we move forward, I hope that, you know, within our um arena as well as D C C A that we can kind of provide additional assistance. Thank you.
You see it happening in every industry. It's just a sign of the times, not just security, every facet, ground is on the rise, so yeah, it's not singled out to just Yeah, it's not single out to just.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for joining us this morning. Next nominee is Governor's Message seven eleven. Uh, Staffy Fujimoto. To the Board of Dentistry for a term to expire June thirty twenty twenty nine. Uh, Board of Dentistry in support. Thank you, Dr. Earl Hasagawa in support. Bob Marshall in support. Uh, that's all the testimony we've received. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, uh, do we have the nominee? Okay. Any questions for the DCCA members? Not, we'll move on. Governor's Message seven thirteen Mark Brown to the Board of Pharmacy for a term to expire June thirty twenty twenty nine. Uh, Board of Pharmacy in support. Thank you. Ronald Taniguchi in support. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to testify? Do we have Mr. Brown? Okay, thank you. Next nominee is Governor's Message seven fourteen to the Real Estate Commission. Frank Goodell for a term to expire June thirty. Uh, let me see, twenty twenty six. Uh, DCCA in support. Thank you very much. Uh, we have Chuck Garrett in support, Deborah All in support. Klamakim support. Georgia Callaway in support. Gary Davis in support. Lance Owens, Nancy Donahue, Arabelle Kamler. All in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this nomination? Okay, Mr. Goodell, please join us.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair and Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Pleased to here, be here and to uh, be nominated to the committee and look forward to working on the committee and, and would. And I'm here to answer any of your questions that you may have for me.
Uh, thank you very much and thank you for stepping forward to serve and join us. Members, questions? Uh, I have a question, yes. Oh shit, that's, I lost my. Uh, first time serving on the board.
That is correct.
Okay. Uh. You know, I think what we've seen in the last couple of years on this committee. Is a pretty steady uh, and consistent. Engagement from members of the condominium, but from residents who live in condominiums who have been dissatisfied with. Some of the association practices in the buildings that they live in. And, you know, I feel it's put the committee in a bit of a bind at times because. You know, there's a recognition that the condominium. Uh, aspects of the Real Estate Commission are just one piece of. You know, many other responsibilities. But there are still members of the community who come forward and feel like they are not giving, they're not given the, their appropriate amount of attention. At the commission. I guess I, I'd like to, I'm interested in your reaction to that and your feeling on the. The, the aspects of condominium association policy. That you are going to be tasked with on the commission.
I'm.
Compared to everything else.
I, I'm fairly aware of, of the. Give and take that goes on at that, uh, I had worked on a, a voluntary disclosure statement from condominium associations along with. Uh, CAI, a association industry. And also the lenders who also have an interest in, in that as well. Um, and as we actually get, got them to be more, uh, the, the associations to be more forthcoming, I think there. There seems to be a break between the actual private association. And the uh, association managers and, and they're hired and they have different capacities. Uh, and that is a challenge, I think, to be met um. On there, depending on how much the uh, the legislature sees them. Uh, in terms of controlling or licensing or just right now, the associations are just, I believe, registered, if, if I'm correct. Uh, but uh, that's a challenge and it's one that probably should be addressed, uh, but I don't have. Pretend to have the answers to uh, that dilemma, but it's definitely something that's worthy of consideration and, and talking about.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, members, any other questions?
Yeah, thank you. Um, Big Island, so I gotta ask questions, right? In your resume, uh. Well, Bradley and Clark Realty have known the principles there for many years, all that. You have a long track record. I think I'm just more asking, what's your thoughts on our whole? Economy relative to the real estate markets? We've, we've seen. Lot of volatility for the last, now since the pandemic and where is your thoughts? Where are we headed with all of this?
Um, sitting on the, on the Big Island. And having the volcano go off and not knowing when it's on or off, that type of situation, I, I've learned to live with a lot of. Unexpected changes and I think we're going through some of those unexpected changes, just like the volcano in the real estate industry. Uh, not to be as dramatic as, as the volcano is, but nevertheless, there are a lot of changes going on. Um, and our supply issues are a little bit different than they are in some areas of the, of, of the mainland. Um, we do, I believe, have a, a, a lot of agents to help. Work with that, uh, but I do see uh, still a, a lack of inventory, which is. Continues to drive prices upwards. Uh, although at a much, much slower race and, and it has, it has sort of hit a peak and it's backed off a little bit. Uh, but we're still very short on the rental inventory and the housing inventory, they, yeah, that we really need to. Focus on getting more in, in tune with where our economy is, so that we don't have to send our kids to the mainland to live.
And um, I was hoping you'd touch on that because it is an inventory issue. From your perspective, from your expertise. Big Island is big. And the housing that is available, do we have it in the right areas or do we have to work harder? On development, when I'm talking about affordable housing, um, east side versus west side, north versus south. Or do we just need it all?
Um, I mean, we need it where the employment is, most importantly. Uh, and, uh, for the most part, I think that is uh, gonna be on the west side, but there are some areas in the commercial areas uh, on the east side there. That are also important uh, in there. Um, and we need a diversity of, of housing and, and the various inventory. I think most important is, is we need to figure out how to attract. The investors and not chase them away. To build and to support the, the building industry and to get that building stock done, whether it's for rentals. Or for housing for homeowners uh, to live in them. Uh, both are important, um, and um, I think sometimes we want to chase away the. The, the investors and, and, but they are a very important part of trying to find the capital to bring in. To the, to the islands to build that housing, to build those rentals, that affordable housing, the affordable rentals. Uh, in there, so I see it more of a, uh, a general need. Uh, in a lot of different areas and having worked with an association that works with both. The Big Island and also Honolulu, very different and, and perspectives in, in Maui. Um, each of those areas is unique and what works in one area doesn't necessarily work in the other areas. Uh, and I've learned that in working with, with our organizations is that the needs are very different on the, each of the islands.
So. In short, we need all different levels of housing and we need it. Essentially everywhere on the.
Yes, because we have been created, there have been gaps in the housing chain, fee, featuring, food chain. Um, and that those gaps have made the problem worse in some areas. And less manageable and we don't see the traditional move up housing. Uh, it's more like I gotta jump the gap type of situation. And that's unfortunate because uh, some of that housing that, that he would be jumping out of, new people could be jumping into. So it's important that we have a consistent range on that. Uh, developers tend to take a close look at that. Sometimes they get a little bit of out of whack, but they have their dollars on the line and they, they want to be. Uh, filling the gap areas.
Okay, thank you, thank you Chair.
Members, any other questions? Senator McTominay.
Thank you for being here, by the way. I want to go back to licensing of associations thing you touched on earlier. I mean, you thought, is that something that you think this committee should look at in conjunction with the Real Estate Commission? Is that something the commission has or will or potentially may have a conversation about?
Um, I think right now it's just registration of, of these associations and I guess that the question is, is if you want to. Take on almost another realm of government, so to speak, and management of associations. Um, uh, it's a big task, there's no question on that. Are there ways to influence? The behavior of associations short of that? Perhaps, I think that needs to be worked into the discussion and whether the, whether the legislature, legislature wants to. Uh, fund what would be necessary for either path on there.
If that were the case, maybe would the Real Estate Commission be an appropriate house, for lack of a better word, for such a program? Or should this be something the commission would discuss as a standalone? Because part of the issue that comes from the committee, frustration of the chair is. The fuzziness of jurisdiction between all the different entities within DCCA when it comes to. What is affectionately been known as condo wars.
Right.
And so, when your nomination came forward and normally we appreciate you and everybody coming to serve, but we are asking for. You as a board to actively engage in the discussion that manifests itself repeatedly in bills, which is what is the role of the Real Estate Commission? Can it be better defined? Is it better even eliminated for other entities in DCCA than what can be done to help us? Create things like perhaps looking at licensure of associations, you know?
It depends how much control you and the responsibility that the legislature would like for, for that. I think the committee should be. You know, uh, open to working with that, uh, and the needs that the legislature finds. Uh, that they want those problems solved in, in a, in a group like that. Um, I think it could be placed in, it, I don't see any reason it can't be placed in independent or, or. You know, that's a conversation that needs to happen and I think uh, uh, between the, the governor's office and where he wants it to administer. And where uh, the legislature would like to place it or, or fund it, uh, is something that. Um, yeah, it should definitely be a point of conversation.
Thank you, thank you, Chair, allow me.
Members, any other questions? Uh, thank you for engaging in the.
Thank you.
Conversation. Uh, and thank you for joining us this morning, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the last nominee on today's agenda, Governor's Message. Seven fifteen Evan Fong for consideration to the Elevator Mechanics Licensing Board for a term to expire June thirty. Twenty twenty nine. Uh, DCCA in support. Thank you very much. Uh, that's all the registered testimony we've received on this nominee. Is there anyone else other than the nominee? Who would like to testify? Okay, if not, Mr. Fong, good morning. Uh, please go ahead and make a statement if you'd like.
Thank you, good morning, Committee. I thank you for your time this morning. Um, I'm honored to accept your consideration, continue to serve and I'm. Available for any questions.
Okay, members, any questions for the nominee? Okay, it looks like there are no questions. Thank you very much for making yourself available and uh, stepping forward for consideration.
Thank you.
Uh, that's all, uh, those are all of the nominees on today's agenda. We will recess for decision making. Okay, we are back on this Friday. March twenty first, twenty twenty five, nine thirty AM confirmation agenda to consider. Uh, a slew of nominees to various boards and commissions. Uh, members, after reviewing the testimony on all of the nominees. Uh, including questionnaires that were submitted to each of the nominees and their resumes. Uh, my recommendation is to advise and consent. To uh, the following nominations, Governor's Message five fifteen David Padilla to the Boxing Commission. Governor's Message five thirty four Stephen Pine to the Board of Dentistry. Governor's Message five thirty five Deborah McMenamy to the Board of Acupuncture. Governor's Message five sixty two Nathaniel Ebslin. Uh, to the Cable Advisory Committee. Governor's Message five sixty five John Takitani to the Board of Professional Engineers, Architects, Surveyors and Landscape Architects. Governor's Message six fifty six Tony Lau to the Board of Professional Engineers, Architects, Surveyors and Landscape Architects. Governor's Message six fifty seven Joy Shimabuku to the Board of Dentistry. Governor's Message six fifty nine David Kamakiya the third to the Board of Electricians and Plumbers. Uh, Governor's Message six six eight Alyssa, Alyssa Toyama to the Board of Professional Engineers, Architects, Surveyors and Landscape Architects. Governor's Message six eighty three Stephen Taketa to the Board of Psychology. Governor's Message six eighty seven Eileen Wada to the Board of Veteran, Veterinary Medicine. Governor's Message seven oh four. Alan Shi to the Board of Pharmacy. Governor's Message seven oh five Andrew Fong to the Hawaii Medical Board. Governor's Message seven oh seven James Place to the Board of Chiropractic. Governor's Message seven oh eight Jill Wakabayashi to the Board of Physical Therapy. Governor's Message seven oh nine Jun Ching to the Board of Psychology. Governor's Message seven ten Scott Collins to the Board of Private Detectives and Guards. Governor's Message seven eleven Staffy Fujimoto to the Board of Dentistry. Governor's Message seven thirteen Mark Brown to the Board of Pharmacy. Governor's Message, I think I said, that was seven thirteen, this is Governor's Message seven fourteen. To the Real Estate Commission. Governor's Message seven fifteen to the uh, Elevator Mechanics Licensing Board. And. Uh, I'm sorry, just to go back, Governor's Message six eighteen. John Arbles to the State Board of Public Accountancy. Uh, the other nominees on the agenda today, we will be deferring decision making on until. Uh, April, Friday, April eleventh at nine thirty AM in this room, Conference Room two two nine. Uh, and the reason for that deferral is that, uh, the only written uh, testimony. Submitted on behalf of those nominees was from the board itself and the nominee was not physically or remotely present in the. Hearing today, so we'll just take a, a little bit of time to confirm that they exist. Uh, we have received their, their questionnaire and resume, uh, but there was no one else to submit. Uh, comments in the public hearing in support of them. Uh, comments in the public hearing in support of them. Mr. Arbles wa- was available, but, uh, he had some trouble getting connected on. Online, so that's a reasonable enough attempt, and so I think we'll, we'll recommend the, uh, nominees that I just mentioned. Uh, for. Uh, advice and consent. Uh. To their, uh. To their respective, uh, board and commission appointments. Uh, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, uh, I'd like to. Take all of the nominees up in one motion. Uh, again, advise and consent by the committee. Vice Chair for the vote. Chair votes aye.
Thank you, um, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator McKelvey. Senator Richard.
Aye.
Senator Awah.
Aye.
Uh, your recommendations are adopted.
Thank you very much. We're adjourned.